All right, I guess we can get started. Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I certify that the meeting has been duly noticed. Go call.
Becca, here. Sid?
Here.
Chrissy. Cory?
Here.
Here, Al.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Becca.
I'll second.
Second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I didn't have any public comment notes tonight. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Unless anybody wants to pull something out of there.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Donna.
I'll second.
Second by Becca. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're up to Jenny.
So the first thing is our, we'd like to spotlight the job Olympics. So Jordan and Casey are here to talk a little bit about, it's kind of a unique program that, again, we're not always sure what people do or don't have an understanding of that we'd like them to share. So if you would.
All right, so I'm Jordan Warner. I am a special ed teacher here at the junior senior high.
All right, Casey Peddell, special education teacher at junior high, junior senior high as well. All right, so I'll kind of get us started. So where this all started was with Wisconsin Employment First Grant. So that's an initiative from the Wisconsin Board for People with Developmental Disabilities, focusing on meaningful employment for people with significant disabilities. So initiatives where you get people in through small internships. You build those employability skills and hopefully you gain long-term employment as well. Unfortunately, when we got this grant, COVID kind of hit a peak, so we had to pivot a little bit. So we thought, what would be the best place to start? Working on these same skills with students and job Olympics was the best option we had. Normally that's put together by a lot of big schools. CISA helps out, CVTC helps out, but we have an awesome staff, great administration, support from everyone. So we decided we were just going to do it in-house. So used a lot of the funding for those materials. We were awarded nineteen hundred out of the two thousand dollars possible, which was great. So we bought all the job Olympics materials and then we started building our in-house coffee shop as well. So once again, focusing on doing what we can in-house to build these employability skills for students.
All right, so a little bit of a backstory. So my first few years, first few years teaching here, I was able to take students to CVTC campus in Chippewa Falls. I was able to take, I think, about five to eight students. Each year, we were able to participate in their job Olympics. That was with a lot of local districts. Students with disabilities were able to compete against each other for a half day and they tried out like five to eight different job rotations throughout that. So like Casey was saying, when we were awarded this grant and COVID kind of hit a peak, we decided to create our own job Olympics. So the Cadet Job Olympics is an all-day event where students are able to try out over ten different stations. And a lot of those stations represent potential jobs within the workforce. And a lot of these stations are skills that I cover within my classroom. So it's really great to bring these to life and kind of show the importance to all of the students that I have, why we talk about these every single day in the classroom. Lastly, we're able to get a lot of different staff involved from different departments and even administration to plan the job Olympics as well as actually running the job Olympics. As you can tell, we have ten different stations. So we need a lot of different staff members to set it up and run those efficiently.
So it always comes down to the why. So why do we run job Olympics here? Helps everyone gain information about the students we can use for job coaching. So we're able to identify the strengths, area of growth. A lot of the students surprised us with how well they did a lot of these subtle skills that we haven't necessarily taught and they've just observed. Builds crucial employability skills that there need to be successful in the workforce. Helps students understand the relationship between what is taught in the classroom, like Jordan said, and how those skills will be needed at work. Each station represents at least one set of skills that would be needed for a potential place of employment in that area. And I have kind of personal stories. My sister-in-law has Down Syndrome and I'm from the Dells originally. My wife is from Baraboo. So they're able to do job Olympics, Dells, Baraboo, Portage, so bigger schools, there's all the water parks. So they do job Olympics and Great Wolf Lodge ended up hosting one of them. So then Morgan did that and she's been working there for fifteen years. So this stuff works, it's meaningful employment, she loves it. She's very particular about how she gets her money, saves her money and spends her money, so it's really cool.
All right, so we were able to utilize a variety, or various locations throughout the high school and then you'll see in a couple of slides, we also went to the school forest. So our high school rotations, students were able to stay at these for about forty-five minutes or so, depending on how many students showed up this day. And we based a lot of these off of jobs in the community that we know students have already been hired at or have expressed a lot of interest in. We included the car detailing because we have so many, I have so many boys in my classroom and a lot of them want to work with vehicles and things like that. So we kind of gave them a little sneak peek into what that would be like. A lot of these have several tasks involved in them, so that's why we had the longer rotations in the morning at the high school. And then here are some pictures. These are just obviously a few students and a few different rotations that they were able to do. One of the favorites was the car detailing and cleaning out the car. We had a beautiful day for it, so it worked out really well. Another cool one that I, we kind of created as a team, was the grocery shopping. So students got a list and they were able to pull items from our mini grocery store. But so many places are doing that now, so that's why we really wanted to incorporate that. And it was a hit, the kids really liked it. They also got to match items up too if we had extra time. So we kind of did two different tasks within one. A lot of them, we did scaffold to like certain students, like if we knew like for the dishes, if they just could dry them and put them away, they just did those portions. Or like the student in the bottom left, he just sorted based on pictures or colors or things like that. So we kind of tailored it to the students that I work with.
Awesome. So then the second half of the day after the pizza, which is always a big hit, we go out to the school forest and utilize that because it's a great building, get kids outside as well. So we have twelve different stations planned there. Every single one of those stations relates to one different career cluster where students could possibly work in. So all these relate to partnerships we hope to build within our community here, the Chippewa Valley. So sorting clothes, hanging clothes, Goodwill does a lot of great things with students with disability, maintenance stuff in regards to cleaning, washing windows. A lot of hotels are awesome with helping students with disabilities, so setting tables, folding, laundry. So every single station there is meaningful and there's an end game that we can collect that data, give it to DVR so that they know what they're getting with these students going in and we can make sure that they're successful when they leave.
Just some more pictures of the various stations that we had out there. Like I said, we had a beautiful day for it, so we were able to have the students practice watering flowers, taking care of those. A lot of greenhouses around here have been interested in having some of our students possibly do or go to work there. So that's why we included that. Raping, a lot of these are work skills, but they can also be life skills. We included making a bed. Obviously, parents would be happy if students started making their bed or hanging their clothes up and a lot of these things they can do at home too. So yeah. And then we have two different sets of interviews. I don't know. Okay, there we go. Sorry.
What did you like? I don't know. Did I like? The dog? Was she shopping? Station? Station? And what else did you really like? Pizza. And the pizza, so you like the grocery shopping station? And the pizza for lunch, of course. What do you want to do when you're older? What do you want to do when you're older? You want to, you want to work? You want to work somewhere where they have pizza? What store do you want to work at? What store did you say you wanted to work at? Did you like Walmart? Yeah, would you want to work at Walmart someday? Yeah, well, thank you, Sid. Hi, Cal. What was your favorite part about the job Olympics? Do you want to answer that?
I liked the folding laundry and hanging clothes stations.
I like folding laundry and hanging clothes station.
All right, so what would you like to do when you're older? What are you going to do after high school?
I would like to work at a sporting goods store someday.
Awesome. Cal, did you have fun at the job Olympics when we did it before? Did you have fun at the job Olympics?
Yes.
Did you like the pizza too?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Cal.
As you can tell, the pizza was obviously a really big hit for lunch. And then I have two more on this one.
All right, hi, Thomas, how are you?
I'm good.
Good, okay. Thomas, what did you like the most about the job Olympics that we've done?
I like cleaning out cars, folding clothes and cleaning the bathrooms.
I'm surprised you said cleaning the bathrooms. What else did you like?
I was, I like the pizza.
What do you want to do when you grow up, when you're done with high school?
I want to be a welder someday.
Nice, okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Sam. All right, Sam, what did you like about the job Olympics that we've done? What was your favorite things? What did you say?
I liked setting the table and cleaning the car.
Nice, so you like setting the table, cleaning out the cars, you were so good at so many of the jobs. What do you want to do after high school? Who do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a farmer.
You want to be a farmer? Do you have to work hard to be a farmer?
Yes.
Yeah, do you think you can work hard to be a farmer?
Yeah.
Grow a beard?
Yeah.
Yeah? All right, well, thank you, Sam.
He was checking himself out a lot. And he loves beards, so I figured. A farmer with a beard. So those are just a couple of the students that we've had participate in the job Olympics. It's just an amazing experience for all of them. Like Casey was saying, we get to see, even as their teacher, I get to see some skills that we don't necessarily practice within the classroom, but they show up to the job Olympics day and they exceed my expectations for it even. So it's really cool.
All right, so next steps. So from this, we had a little money left over, so we wanted to figure out what would be another continuous activity that we can do here in the building, utilize the staff we have here. And Ms. Warner did an awesome job starting out the coffee shop. So we used some money to start that fund, so every Friday, teachers get caffeinated, the students will deliver the coffees or hot chocolate, which is awesome. Then we're going to continue hosting job Olympics here, one per semester. Keep increasing the rigor based on the data we get, so actually review it, see what went well, what went well, what didn't go well, and then adjusting. Using the information gained from these events to, to hopefully set up some job shadow and job coaching opportunities within our community. Because ultimately with the grant, our original goal was to do something called All Hornets in the Hive, where we were partnering with local businesses and sending students out for job shadows and small internships where maybe it was one or two days a week, one or two days every other week, going in, working, having someone go with you and see how things went. And then continue to build our transition program within our building for the students who receive special education services. This is just one snippet of everything we do for our transition program. Keeps growing every year and it's a lot of great meaningful work we're doing.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Is that, I'd like, about the picture of the students, is that typically it's pretty much everybody that was there that day?
I think we had a couple of students that might have been on. Right now I have ten students on my caseload, but we are kind of expanding it to some other caseloads as well, some students that other case managers have said they would benefit from practicing these skills and kind of building up their, almost their resume, basically like some skills that they, because some of the other teachers don't have time to practice the skills as much as I do, so we've kind of increased our list. We're hoping for about thirteen kids in the next round, so.
And this is kind of just a framework where we can keep building off of it for other students with different disabilities, significant learning, or specific learning disabilities, OHI. We want to just keep growing with that and making sure that when students leave our building, they're successful and that they have a plan, whether that's some type of educational plan or meaningful employment. That's something we're really passionate about.
So would you guys say that the neighboring, most of the neighboring school districts just go, use the CVTC job Olympics or are they doing their own or?
Yeah, typically when we go, there's, and in the past too, I didn't mention this, but when I went, I was only able to bring a couple of students versus getting all of my kids involved. I think there's probably like five schools that get to go. When I started, I was just kind of on the mailing list, so I was like, okay, sure, let's go. And I took a couple of students, but this way we're able to have all of the students participate and then some extras too, so.
And this, this grant really opened up a couple of doors, some networking opportunities. So through that grant, I met some people and they asked if I would be the teacher representative for the Wisconsin's community on transition. So every month, I attend a couple of conferences to help out with that. And all these big districts and organizations are asking what Cadet does and how Cadet does it. So people are taking what we're doing in our very small town and big districts down Milwaukee Green Bay area are starting to use and copy our template and do it the way that we're running it. It's been really amazing.
Is that something that you have funding for now with the grant money that you got? How long will that last you?
We use all the grant funding right now. So we use a lot of it to buy the materials and sustain that. In a couple of years, as it grows and we need to shift based on what job outlooks are in the future, hopefully we have some funding aside for that as well. The big thing is hopefully being able to send students to local businesses that we can partner with that are flexible and willing to open it up once COVID ends and everything, where we can have some of our fantastic or professionals or special education teachers based on coverage go out into the workforce and gain those small internships and then, once again, meaningful employment going forward. So they're set up for success and it kind of cuts out DVR a little bit or helps them out so that they already have a place set up and they're going to focus just on job coaching.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So next is the test to stay option for the COVID plan. And I kind of talked about it twice because it'll be listed under new business for action. So this may look familiar. This is kind of the COVID protocol plan that we did. This is the new piece right here that's highlighted, the test to stay option for asymptomatic close contacts. And what, what happened is, and I will say, this, this is just a way for us to try to have maybe a middle ground between people who are close contacts and not symptomatic where they might have an option to stay at school. This is not necessarily like DHS approved. There are several districts that are doing it. La Crosse is probably the biggest one in our area that is. But the idea is, so Jessica Hager has done a lot of work on this. Students or staff who are considered a close contact to a positive person for COVID, they would not be required to quarantine from school if they meet the following conditions. So they are not having any symptoms. They would be willing to be tested every forty-eight hours through a rapid antigen test with school staff. Jessica would be doing that or coordinating that, similar to she does any other medical procedures. And that testing would occur through day seven, as long as there's no symptoms and they're willing to wear a mask when they're at school. If at any point that, that person would start to exhibit symptoms or have a positive test or is not masking, they would follow the typical quarantine protocols that we've had all along. In order for a student to be tested, there is a parent consent form that they have to do and they have to register at this COVID connect because that's kind of where the tests go. That's where Jessica enters them and then kind of that's the process around that. And at this time, we wouldn't have the capacity to provide testing for other students who aren't under quarantine. And working with Jessica, we feel like, at least with our current trends, assuming everyone who fit this parameter wanted to be tested, she believes that she could handle that. I mean, is it possible if things really explode that would change? You know, I guess there's a chance of that, but she believes she could do that. The one, you have to do a waiver. Part of it is, it just has to do with the Department of Health Services because we're doing kind of a lab test that Jessica did get that waiver approved. So it just talks about, she shares, here's my process, here's my procedure, here's how we know they're not going to mix up, here's how they get submitted. And so that has been approved. The only thing that we don't have yet, if this were to pass tonight, is actually the rapid tests yet. She's still waiting to get those, so we'd have to wait till we get those here before she could start to do that. But she's hoping those would come pretty soon. So I will, I can just kind of quickly click on the consent form where board members have it in their packet. And this is based on, whoops, the first page is blank. So it talks about our schools using this form. What happens when they get the results? And then the rest is really just the demographic information and then for the parents. This consent form would be good through this school year or if, I mean, they can always revoke it at any time. You know, we do know this isn't going to be kind of the magic answer just because some parents won't want their child tested or some parents maybe won't want their child to wear a mask. I mean, it might not fit, but at least it would give an option for some students and more staff who have fallen under the parameters of close contact quarantining. So any questions from board members on the idea of that?
I was wondering what your thoughts were on extracurricular activities outside of this school.
So, I mean, they would kind of follow the same. And that's, you know, with, we know some districts that have sort of changed their close contact procedures. So it would probably, if you're able, if you do this, then it would sort of follow the same way as long as you're asymptomatic.
How would this work? And I know it's happened to Terry a couple of times at the elementary where they sent the whole class.
So then, any parents who, so part of it is Jessica sort of has a protocol she goes through. First of all, if anyone's vaccinated and doesn't have symptoms, this wouldn't apply because they already wouldn't have to quarantine. Then she would contact those, I'll just assume it's students. So she would contact those parents, see if they're interested in this and they would have the option, they could sign the consent, say, yep, we want to do it. And then those kids would come back to school and be here, you know, until either their time limit is done or if they start to show symptoms or have a positive test. Parents, if they say, no one has to participate in this, if maybe some just say, we don't want our child tested. There are some people that I know have felt that way. Then we would still do just the traditional kind of seven, ten day quarantine. Or if you get a negative test, you can come back at day seven, otherwise day ten without symptoms. And if symptoms develop, then it's a little bit different.
And so this would just be going out to in the situation, or are you going to send this to everyone?
I think we would just send it out in this situation because we don't want to confuse people that you could get tested. You know, the, the piece I think that will be the trickiest is the communication because some are, sometimes people are worrying, we're going to test kids so that they don't know or get, you know, some of that. So I think that would just go with that student in that situation. And let's say, I mean, if it happens twice, then Jessica would say, we already have your consent from the last time. You know, unless you choose to revoke it, we are going to use it. But it would only go out in the case where someone met the, kind of that criteria around being a close contact, not having symptoms. And, and because they, and if they say they want to participate, I mean, if they say they don't, we wouldn't send it. So it's, it's not going to fit for everyone, but it would give some options to people that we don't currently have. And like a lot of things, it's not a perfect solution. It's, it still offers some mitigation strategy, yet a little bit more flexibility than we currently have. So any questions?
Is that something we would let public health know that we're doing? Or I can just see maybe some confusion because when you get a call from public health saying, this is what you need to do and then they give you your quarantine date and all that kind of stuff, that might be confusing for people?
We would. So they've been kind of part of our communication all along in this process. And then what Jessica would do, so typically she sends them a list of, here's the close contacts, whatever. Then she would just add a column to that list, these are the close contacts that are choosing the test to stay option.
So how's the testing paid for, is that just district, the district money?
Yes, and there, there is actually DPI support for that. So that shouldn't be a cost to us right now.
All right, yeah.
It's, yes, it's time for Jessica, but we feel like it's still, she feels like it's manageable.
So we get to the point later where we'd be approving it, everything's basically ready to go, we just don't have the test.
Correct. And so, once, right. And that's, we just thought, because it's a change to our plan, we wanted to get it approved because otherwise if we wait till we get the test, then we wouldn't be able to approve it till the next board meeting. So by approving it, the assumption is, once tests become available, we would start implementing it. And we're thinking, she doesn't know for sure because everybody's working on it, but she believes it could be this week yet. Any other questions on that? All right, so December all-time best. Just as a reminder, this is sort of for a student or a class who's done better than they've ever done before. We have a lot of people that submit for this because we want to recognize that. It kind of goes back to our report card. We want to recognize improvement in the work that people are doing. So Weiss's second grade, they had a goal to increase fluency. Four students in that class improved by more than fifty words per minute in their first trimester, which is pretty extraordinary. And Strzuski's third grade, eighty-nine percent of her students scored and eighty-five percent are higher on their math quizzes, rounding to the nearest ten and hundred, solving addition problems and filling in their nine-hundred chart. And if you know what's familiar, her class is in here a lot and I actually met with them after the last board meeting and said, now you got to go even higher. And they've been kind of challenged by it, so it's kind of fun to watch them get into it a little bit. Mr. Potel's transition class, students creating their own mission statements regarding the positive impact that they want to have within our building and for themselves. And just to help them again with that self-awareness, there's things that they have never done before. Ms. Schrader's fifth grade, a student received a C minus on her chapter five summative at the first attempt, highest score ever for the student. And I want to lift this up just because sometimes we think of all-time best as you're only getting As or it's the kids who always do the best. For this student, that's better than she's ever done before. And so that's something we want to recognize because there's effort that got there. Ms. Kotek, third grade, at the beginning of the year, only four students were able to score eighty percent on the foundations test. Most recent, twelve students scored eighty percent or better and after reteaching, about one student had eighty percent or better. Foundations is kind of the primary phonics, phonemic awareness program that we're using in our elementary. This is the first year for third grade using that program, so it's kind of a challenge for students and teachers. We want to recognize Henry Hager. They had a forty-book challenge and he read a total of forty books. He got a trophy, he's pretty excited, his name's on a plaque in the library wall, so good for him. Again, Robyn's third grade, her unit three foundations spelling, seventy-three percent of her students achieved and eighty percent are higher. And that's kind of for foundations, eighty percent is sort of that goal that students are looking for. Ms. Lyons, fifth grade, fourteen out of sixteen students received an eighty-three percent or higher on their most recent math quiz. And Cadet Girls Basketball, they had their longest two runs of the season. So a thirteen-point run with the first points, eight points in a row from Lauren Gadel. Then an eight-point run where six of those points were scored by Lauren Gadel. So she had twenty points overall, so in there as well. So I appreciate the chance just to be able to share some of this out because, and then what happens is either the student or a class gets a no from me and kind of reminder that they've been recognized at the school board. Any questions?
No, but the list is getting longer, which is good.
Well, that's what I want to challenge, like what's the all-time best of the most all-time best that we can do? So budget update. So there are two things tonight that I fell short on and we had some software issues. One is budget update and the other, what you'll see later, is in junior high grades. There's been some issues with Forecast Five. If you remember, we usually would get that one-page budget sheet that sort of says where we're at at each point in the year. I wasn't able to get that to work even by today. So we will share that out at the committee of the whole meeting if that is okay with people's, people? And moving into strategic planning, so DPI report card, progress and goal setting. So I'll talk a little bit about our report card trends and this one as well, you'll see in the, for action later. So these are the report card trends. We've celebrated a lot around exceeding expectations this year for each building as well as our district as a whole. We also are planning in January a celebration for students. I think I, so looking at the third and fourth, four members are available to have some ice cream and kind of a treat for kids to sort of celebrate it, to help them have some ownership as well. And I'll explain it again. And I'll explain it again. There isn't a great scientific methodology to say, here's what our new goal should be. Partially because there's big changes in, this year there was a big change in how the whole report card was calculated. So yes, we had a big jump, but part of that was because of our growth being calculated and, and a strong piece for us. And that was some place where we performed in a strong way. So you'll see, under new business, I will suggest a goal for the next report card. If you can remember, Brad talked about it at our committee meeting. And what I did was, the 16, 17 to 17, 18 to 18, 19, there's still, it wasn't exactly consistent if you look at the assessments, but at least the formula behind the report card didn't change in a big way like it did this year. So what I did was I took the growth from the 64.8 to 65.1 is a .3. 65.1 to 67.4 is a 2.3. I just averaged those to a 1.3. And so you'll see later on, that's what I suggested as growth. Like I said, it's, it's, it's really hard having the background so different. If I took all of the averages and went all the way back to 15 and 16, I think Cory had mentioned this before. Actually, we still would be looking at a decline when we, if we average it all out over all of those years. So that didn't necessarily make sense. I will say, the higher it gets, the harder it is to keep moving up just because the, you know, it's just, the, it's, it becomes trickier to keep getting all those extra points. So I can show you, I'll skip down to so you see where it. And this, just to make it fit, I dropped off that 15, 16, and I wasn't including that data anyway. So I had a goal of 76.1, and I just averaged the growth for those years, 16, 17 to 17, 18, and then 17, 18 to 18, 19. And that's how I came up with the 1.3. Any questions on that? Okay. The grade report?
Hold on one second, I'm going to ask them on this.
Go ahead.
I don't have any, any problem with that at all. I'm just wondering if, I know Cory, you mentioned it about the, oh, what was the graph? The kids that are, that weren't meeting, that weren't proficient?
Was the achievement, right?
Yeah, the achievement. And maybe that's not something we have to look at, put in here. But is that, then we could potentially look at setting a, setting some sort of goal for ourselves?
Like just for the achievement?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, just, I mean, because it seems like it's a pretty important piece. You know, kind of digging, digging in a little bit more than just looking at this big, big number that, as we all know, sounds kind of crazy how they calculate it. But that one, seems like it has a little bit more, a little bit more worth, I guess, in, in my mind. If we can set some sort of goal on that, I think also. And it doesn't, like you say, it doesn't necessarily have to go on our report, district report card or anything. I think that's just something that we should set between our administrators and us. I, I think that's important anyway, I think.
Yeah, so it's, the current is, uh, goal is 56.9, I believe. If I can pull it up quickly, I think. Or I have it, if I have it, so I'll register it. Yeah, 56.9. So, and what you look at, just as a clarification, this doesn't mean 56.9 of our students are proficient. What goes into this is if they're below basic, they don't get any points. First of all, it's three years of data that's, so it's weighted kind of two different ways. Three years of data, the most recent year is weighted one and a half, the year before that is one, and the year before that is half. So there's weighting of your years. And then there's also weighting of the score. So if you're below basic, they don't count as any points. A student who is basic counts as a half a point and proficient counts as one, advanced counts as one and a half. So even, even if we move students from below basic to basic, let's say they're not maybe more proficient, but that still has a positive impact on the score. As well as if we move students from proficient to advanced, that has one and a half point positive impact on the score. So I think this is the one that you're thinking about, that we could talk about administratively, like what? Because that is, the, all of the work we're doing with our universal curriculum work and trying to have more students successful that first time without requiring reteaching is based on getting that mark.
Right.
I'd even be okay with just saying that we get those two at or above the state average.
Yeah, that was my thing too. I'm less concerned about the number there. I mean, obviously raising the number helps our score. But if you click onto the achievement page, I, I really want to see those numbers move up in those two bottom categories. Like that's the most important, like, you know, getting more people to graduate is great, but if they're below proficiency, like, not great, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That makes sense. Any other comments or questions on that?
Can we talk about that at the committee meeting somewhere now?
Yeah.
Sure.
That'd be a time to do it.
Yep.
Yeah, my thought is just where we're going to-
What's going to be-
Pick those goals.
Where we're going to put it and where, I'm just looking at the learning and achievement, the strategic plan. And we've got actions under the DPI report card, exceeding expectations for that, but I don't know if that-
Maybe that'd be something for Terry and Caleb, for you guys, you know, shoot us a number, where you think, you know, what, you, you know, at that time, talk to Jenny and see what you think you guys can pull up.
My concern is just where we, where, where we're tracking it, where we at it, how we're, where it fits in with our strategic plan.
Yeah, I think it's hard because the strategic plan, like, we met the goal already.
Right.
And so I get that. So maybe we just track it out of a separate plan for now, I mean, it's-
Our internal?
Yeah. We can have another plan. If we've met that goal, great, let's do another one, you know?
Well, and we, so this, like the annual scorecard, we've got the improve, because we didn't know what our base score-
Right.
So we just said improve it. We can add in that piece and maybe just, I mean, we can do an additional goal in that category.
For our annual.
In the annuals.
Yep.
So that might be the place to do it.
Sure.
That makes sense.
Okay, any other questions on that? So for the grade report, and again, I feel a little bit like Groundhog Day where the junior high piece, I will bring all of it back, but it'll include that to the committee meeting. There were just some issues with edulclimers and we haven't had them in the past, but the data wasn't in there. And so it is in Skyward, but the only way to pull it from Skyward is to do it by hand. So these are elementary grades, these are grades three, four, five, six. Literacy, math, other includes everything else together, specials, any science and social studies. And it goes by trimester one, two, three of last year, and then trimester one of this year, trimester one, two, three of last year, trimester one of this year. And some of these are a little bit tricky just because as, as you get up above kind of 90% of your students being successful, sometimes there is some fluctuation there. I don't know that I believe that is an indication that we're off track. I think especially in literacy right now, we've got a new program that's pretty rigorous for students. And we're trying to, teachers are learning it, students are learning it. And, I mean, but that's, it's something that will actually, we believe is going to improve our results. Getting back to the achievement question overall. And then high school grades, again, literacy, now these go by quarters. So this is, the first four are last year, quarter one, two, three, four. And then this darkest blue bar is this year, quarter one. And again, quarter one. And other for high school is a lot of data points because that's everything. And I will say, especially at the high school level, it's interesting because it's not, they're actually very close. I mean, even the math and the other, other typically is better just because those are courses often that students choose. I mean, once in a while, there's, you need if I had credit or something like that. But most of those specials classes, kids choose if they want to take them or not. So generally, they do perform at a higher level there.
Is this also C minus or above?
Yes, these are all C minus or above.
So I like the way that the DPI report card does those stacked graphs. Is there a way we could see the stacked graph? So like you'd see that quarter broken apart by, you know, C minus, B, A.
Like by grade?
By, by grade, right? So, because I mean, it's great to see that we're 80% C minus or above, but is 90% of the 80% C minus or is 90% of it A, right?
Yep. My answer is I think so. Actually, the answer is yes, there is a way. I just have to figure out the technical card of how to do that. Because what, what it does right now is it just cuts it off at the C minus.
Right.
We'd have to just set in more benchmarks, which I think we can do. That's something that Marcy does typically.
That just gives me a better idea of the, the distribution.
And then kind of on the opposite end of that, if you look at the D, so these are seven through 12, Ds and Fs. And you'll see, so the blue line is courses failed. And then the kind of orange line is the percent of students. So what you'll notice is actually, there was an increase in courses and a decrease in percent of students. So one of the things that we found is we have fewer students, but they're, some of them are failing multiple courses. And, I mean, all of them are, are part of interventions and things that staff are working with to try to address those issues. So there's not as many students impacted, but the impact is greater for the students that are there. And that's something that we're continually working on. You know, and I will say, the, kind of the DF piece is, you know, there's sort of that yin and yang a little bit about, you know, the, a former boss that I had, I think, said it the best, the two hardest grades to get should be an A and an F. But, you know, there are some students or there is, you know, some people who believe that at some point, we shouldn't just pass hits to pass hits either. So, you know, we wrestle with that. But the goal really here is how to, what's the issue? How do we get the work done and get the learning in so that their students are passing courses? So just to give you, like, it's, because it's on the graph, it's 6.9% of the students, there were 56 courses. There were seven students altogether that had multiple failed courses that we're working with.
This might be more for Caleb, but just curious, if students in, in these situations that are typically, do you feel like XLT time is being used effectively?
For those seven kids?
Yeah.
No, not for those seven kids. For the 95% of kids that are using it, I think it's a good opportunity. Kids who are failing multiple classes, you know, they have four days a week to see probably four teachers. Some of these students are avoiding even going to one teacher. And we have to find out, you know, where they're going, why they're skipping. Like, it, it, it's kind of a rodeo sometimes for situations like that. And even then, teacher might have 12 kids in the room that they're trying to help out. So sometimes we try to do something a little bit different than just XLT. And we have a, the other day, we had a meeting with, family meeting with teachers involved and trying to figure out the why behind the failures. Also not, not a vote-proof system, either way you look at it, you know?
Thanks.
So that, we'll come back at the committee meeting because I'll add the junior high and I'll try to work on something stacked if we can get that by then. Any other questions on the grade report? Attendance report, so we did have, you'll see it's been somewhat, I mean, there's a little bit of an increase from October to November. I would say October for us was our heaviest time with COVID illnesses and having students and staff out. Kind of back to that earlier piece, either they were sick or they were in close contact. We, we're starting to bounce back from that a little bit. And we do, I mean, we have some students with other illness, but I would say for the most part, it's, again, we have a few students that are kind of cycling back to, it's kind of hard to get them here, not necessarily COVID related at all. But again, continually working to improve that. And it, part of why we track this is we just want to make sure kids are in classes as much as possible. The behavior report, kind of, we track that. So again, the blue line is out of school suspension, the orange line is in school suspension. We kind of had that goofy last year where, or in September where they kind of crossed back and forth. Both of them are down for November. And some of that might just depend on an incident that happens that can sort of bump us up. But if you look at the history, we're still, still overall declining. And we try to be pretty judicious with the use of those. There are times where that's what we have to do, but we try to reserve it for those times. Any questions on that? So the WASB development feedback, we just, we had them here at our committee meeting to provide some kind of training, question answers, just any feedback board members have or any next steps that you're thinking would be helpful. And I guess I'll, at the same time, kind of talk about the state education convention reminder. December 15th is the dead, is what they call the early bird registration deadline. So right now I have Donna Cedric Al signed up if you know before December 15th. Not that you couldn't decide after that, but if you want to let myself, Versi, or Krita know, we'll get people registered. But any feedback from the WASB development thing, something in addition you think you'd like for the future? Anything next steps you feel like it sort of answered questions and we're good to go?
I was kind of glad to hear him say that regardless of how you get there, the end result is lots of, all on the same page. It's kind of, as being not a parliamentary procedure chat, I wasn't sure we were doing a lot of that stuff right. Made me feel better to know that once we get the right result at the end, that's the important thing, so.
I think having, having, doing this every year annually, even if it's a review, is good. Because, you know, we have changes on the board and stuff and things that they may not aware, be aware of. And, and we're still going to continue to learn too. Even us experienced board members are going to continue to learn something. And I think it, it's a good to do an annual review with that. If it's WSB, I thought he did a great job.
I agree.
It was pretty in-depth.
Do they, so like, I know like prior to COVID, like the towns association, they would come out and do like yearly trainings in the area, like in the districts, like, you know, every election happens in the spring. So they've got a whole bunch of like new elected official type training in June. And so like as an elected official, you get to attend that, but you don't have to go all the way to Milwaukee.
Right.
Do they normally do that, WASB too?
They do. So they have, they have regions, we're region four, so you might have to go to Menominee or Durant.
Which is fine, but not all the way to Milwaukee.
Like you said, you're not going that far. And that, like I said, some of that for them has changed due to COVID. So a lot of it, more of it is online or some things like that. But yes, that's been the tradition there where, you know, it's, and even for officer training, like it might be a president training or just a new board member training. And they as well, I think, have always been pretty good.
Yeah, I've found those types of trainings, even at the town hall, to be invaluable. So it's, you know, I'm looking forward to getting some of those trainings and things that are get back to normal.
Yes. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think connecting with, um, annually in some shape or form, if we can, you know, if there's a hot topic that, that they feel like is, you know, they've had a lot of questions on from a lot of districts and they feel like it would be beneficial for us, or if we identify something as an issue that we'd like more information on, kind of like this time. I think everything I've participated in with WASB has been excellent, really helpful, so I agree.
I think for in-person, if we do that again, I completely agree with having it called annually. I would prefer less depth by PowerPoint and more discussion. Because I mean, the one he presented was great, and what she presented, what they both presented was fantastic. But some of that stuff, I think we could have either read offline or whatever. But the discussion is really where I thought was very beneficial. And I would have liked more time for open, like, ask me anything type stuff.
Yeah.
By the time they were done with their tour.
Yes. Yeah. I will say, I, we had a miscommunication a little bit as on the overall timeline, not that, so we'll figure that out. not that, so we'll figure that out. Okay, and then, again, the state education convention, just a reminder of that December fifteenth date.
So, I will not be able to get that week off, I was trying to, but that's just not going to be in the cards, apparently, as much as I tried to keep that week open.
For the new business, need a motion to set a new report card goal.
I'll make a motion to adopt the new draft report card.
A second.
Motion by Cedric, second by Chrissy. Any discussion on that one? So, this is where we'd be going with the one point three? Everybody's okay with that? Seems pretty reasonable to me, I think.
Jenny, when do you get an idea if the criteria are going to stay the same for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Usually, I think they will, I'm looking at Missy, because she sometimes here's ahead, not always ahead, but usually, like this, we knew it was going to change, probably for a couple of years even.
Oh, okay.
But we didn't, we didn't, they don't always say, like, how it's changing, but usually, I think they'll try to keep it the same at least for two or three years now. That's what we're hoping.
Well, it doesn't help to change it every year, that's for sure. Nobody wins.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, that was setting the new goal to one point three percent higher than what we had, so was it seventy-six point one?
Yeah, one point.
Yeah. Next one, the motion to approve the new testing to stay program for COVID.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Becca, second by Donna. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one, we just want to discuss the superintendent evaluation template. Donna?
Me.
Yeah.
I just brought my book.
So, we did, I shared with board members, this is the templates that we've used, I think, the last two years. Donna had, WASB has a template that she had gone to some training on, and you can't, because it's a subscription, you can't really go online and get it, so I couldn't show it to you, there, but there are some self-samples, that you could see, that, again, kind of are similar, there, if, with that, there would be some training, not quite as extensive, but some training that goes with it, but you want to talk about it?
I think it costs, like, six hundred dollars, there's.
And that's for three years.
Three years, there's either, either eleven or thirteen areas within that plan or evaluation. You don't do all of them every year, so you might take three this year, and four next year, to do the evaluation. I like it. I've had multiple times, I've gone to listen to this, Gilman came in and had the training, and everybody at Gilman, on the school board that I've talked to, have been really pleased with how it's been going, and they didn't do every chunk. Colby does it too, their philosophy is, they do one area every month. And if that works out for them, but both schools have gone through the training and have nothing but high praise for the WASB evaluation tool. And quite honestly, I've never liked ours. You have four points that you don't get to break down, it's either four points, one point, this gives you that option of kind of breaking it down.
Kind of, because, like, leadership is one whole thing, you can't say, like, a three on C and a two on E or whatever, you, it's the whole category.
Is there a way for us to get this information beforehand, a little review, like, like me, like, how do I know, like, if it's better than this one, if I look at it, like?
Do I have the books?
You can get us that, well, you got it booked, yeah.
They showed some of it at the, at the Green Bay.
Yes, they did, they talked about it there as well.
There's been two different times where I've been at.
And I might be able to scan this.
Okay, you want to do that?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Why don't I try that?
Can we look at it at the committee meeting?
Yeah, I think bringing the committee in the hall, so we can kind of compare and contrast the old one and this one.
Well, and I, and I'm going to say, because evaluations, evaluations do pretty quick, right?
You would, typically, you would work on that in January.
So, we're almost to the point now, we'll probably end up using our old one this year, right?
We say that every year, we didn't say this something last year.
Well, I mean, if we bring it to the committee in the hall, and then January first, we vote on it, we could still use the new one if we voted on it, and we can get that done. So, we're just going to put our homework in over the holidays, folks.
I'm with it, yeah, because I don't, I'm, it's, this will be my third evaluation, and I, you know, I would agree with Donna, I don't, it's very.
Cumbersome.
Confusing.
Yeah, it's.
And I do think WASB, that there might be a webinar.
Oh, that I could watch? Okay, I'll check on, check on that too.
Where's the old one from? What was that?
That was.
Made up.
There was a group that, like, they kind of compiled it from some different sample ones from other districts, there was kind of a subgroup of the board, three or four years ago, that did this.
And I think.
Don't remember doing that.
Yeah, it must have been after you.
It's just, I, I found, like, that form would be fine and just perfect for one superintendent to evaluate another one. Like, you know, for us that aren't doing her job, I feel like that's very hard. Our old form's very hard, because we're trying to judge her on how she's doing stuff that we have no idea what.
I like the idea of having something more professional.
Yeah. Well, and it is, they're, they kind of support kind of picking one or two areas, and then kind of going narrower and a little bit deeper, versus, kind of, this is a very broad, about all kinds of things.
I think as a district goes, I think if, by going narrower and digging a little bit deeper, I think in the long run, we'd end up helping our superintendent maybe get better at certain areas, in the long run, I think it will be better for all parties involved, I guess.
I like the idea, like, almost a three-year commitment to it too, so we know we're going to stick with the same thing, so we can actually find some repetition.
Well, an evaluation isn't meant to punish somebody, it's meant to make them a better person, so, if that current form doesn't do that, then we should definitely look at something different.
Well, and I won't have been through it once, but I feel like last year, that's kind of what we did anyway, where there were areas that, you know, we kind of just glossed over, because they weren't areas of concern, and then we gave a lot of feedback on a few areas, so I feel like we kind of did that anyway.
Right, yeah. Did the best we can.
It probably took way more time than we needed to go over it.
So, that I will bring back, and even if I, if they know we're interested in purchasing it, I think they would kind of release some of that, because they've done it in the past, to the committee in the hall.
Is there any formal timeline that needs to happen with, like, with your?
So, the only thing that, if, that typically would happen with the board is, and, no, like, last year it got behind, so it didn't happen in January, it happened in February, but, so for my contract, January thirty-first, if there's no action taken, it just rolls over.
Automatically.
But if, if the board would want to not extend it, that decision has to be made by January thirty-first. So, that's, that's the only timeline that kind of happens with that.
Yeah, that's the law, you got to have, give due notice, if you're going to non-renewal.
And so, like, last year it got behind, so the evaluation wasn't February anyway, but, so, it's not the law that you have to have the evaluation first, but that's typically what you try to do.
Right.
Okay. You could scan that in before our next meeting, so we have time to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I guess we just need a motion going to close.
I'll make a motion per state statute nineteen point eight five one C, approval in the closed session to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, personnel issue.
I'll second.
Motion by Becca, second by Donna.
Becca?
Yes.
Cedric?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Yes, Al?
Yes.